All right. Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting going. We were just in executive session. And the time is now 6:34 PM and the executive session has been concluded. Will all participants in the executive session please state their names for the record? I will start with Suzanne.
Suzanne Leclerc, and I will speak for Amy Jacob HR who's in the meeting as well.
Thank you.
Jeff Wilson.
Hillary LaBarre.
Kelly Case.
Rusty Neal.
Robert Zuluaga.
Catherine Nakai.
Frank Connors.
Cheryl Harvey.
And also Drew.
Gorgi.
Gorgi was present as well. If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open screening law, I ask that you state your concerns now. Hearing none. Suzanne, will you, oh, actually, I also want to make an announcement that we, at the conclusion of the executive session, we had received a full report from the negotiator. And we will announce the finalist tomorrow morning for the city manager position. So with that, Suzanne, will you please take real call for counsel?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor LaBarre?
Present.
Mayor Tim Case?
Here.
Councilmember Connors?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Nakai?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. This evening, we have no ceremonies, presentations, or appointments. On item number four, with additions, deletions, or corrections to agenda, I do have a deletion. Item 10A is deleted. It was not needed on the agenda this evening. It was not necessary. And we are off to five consent calendar. Counsel, can we do a five A and B together, or do we have any issues?
I asked her before we came in, I had one question on the expenditures.
Okay, which item?
It's a, oh, it's on the, on the, it's a.
Okay.
Yeah. So if he just wants to answer the one, there's one line item, it's about $73,000 to a promotions company. I just wanted to get a.
Absolutely. So this is actually for a sewer repair. The company just looks like a sales and marketing company. I had to look at it myself because I was a little confused. But that's, it's a, it's a sewer repair for the water fund.
Okay, so it's an outside subcontractor?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Now, now we can do them together if you like.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
I make a move to approve the consent calendar items A and B. As.
You may vote.
My Chrome has decided to update, so yes.
I'm a yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, counsel. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, very good. This might be the quickest. We've gotten off to item number six in a while. We have a public comment on items not on agenda. And Suzanne, do you have anyone signed up for that?
I do. I just have, that I have one person in person that signed up and I, are you guys promoting me so I can see Zoom? Okay, is anyone signed up on Zoom? Okay, right now, we just have Jerry Penland that would like to speak.
Okay, very good.
You're in 10A? We have nobody. So do you want to speak on it now, because we won't call that item?
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Penland, Woodland Park resident. Back when I was on planning commission several, maybe five years ago, I remember a discussion about the Sturman property. I'm sorry, I don't know, remember the details. I just thought about it yesterday and haven't had time to research it. But I think it'd be more appropriate for the city to research it anyway. We had a discussion, and I believe there's an agreement that if there were any changes to anything on that property, and I don't know that, like I said, the details, I'd have to go back and look. The road would be opened to the public. It's still blocked off. It's locked off, but there hasn't been any changes. This is the first time I've noticed anything on the agenda about it. But I remember clearly that in the discussion, any changes on that property would require the road to be open. I'd like for the city to research that and check it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
And there's no one signed up on Zoom, so we're good to go.
We have no item seven this evening for unfinished business. We're on to item number eight ordinances on initial posting. And we have 8A, which is ordinance 1465, and our presenter is Aaron Basalati. And B, if you want to take it all together, that, council, if council's okay with that, he can just discuss both. If you have questions or comments, we can do that. Right.
All right. Can't make that any bigger. Okay, tonight I have for you on initial posting, the two budget ordinances. Before I go into the budget ordinances themselves, I did just want to go over all of the changes that we had from the original proposed budget to now. So we had, looks like five changes in total. We had a decrease in the visitor center line on page 47 of $20,000. So we reduced that line down to zero. On page 35, we took the $12,000 that was for the camera, and we added it to the advertising marketing line for $12,000 there. Under other adjustments, we had the Public Works Administrative Engineering Services on page 57. We added $30,000 to that line. Under interdepartmental on page 47, we added 17,648 for legal services. And on the DDA on page 91, we decreased the professional services by 5,000. So these are the only monetary changes that were in the budget for expenditures.
Okay.
Don't you also have a change in the unrestricted fund balance because of some of these changes?
So that will be reflected in the final budget, but it doesn't change any of the numbers I've shown to you at the last two meetings. They're the same. These were already included in those last numbers I presented.
Okay.
Well. Okay, so at the, at the work session, the final fund balance numbers that I presented, those are including all those changes. All right.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am.
Go ahead, Darren. Did you have something?
Oh, no.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 1465, series 2023, on initial posting, appropriating the sums of money to the various funds and set the public hearing for December 7, 2023. I'll second.
Thank you, counsel. You may vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. And mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 1466, series 2023, on initial posting, and set the public hearing for December 7, 2023.
I'll second.
Case and Neal. Council, may vote. I got everybody that done. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. We are off to items 9A. And with 9A and B, CJ is going to just present both of them. And then I will be sure with public comment and questions and comments from council if you have any, so. I'd like to just put it both together because they're the same issue.
Mayor, before we get to this presentation, I know some of the audience were coming for the budget discussion. Can you let them know that's going to happen at the?
Oh, yeah, this is just initial posting, so, but the actual budget discussion will be at our following council meeting where we'll take public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, counsel. Again, this is CJ Gates with the City of Woodland Park Planning Department. As the mayor stated, you have two ordinances for your consideration tonight. This is the second part of a two-part process. The first part of the process was the first reading of the two different ordinances, which was done on November 2, and at that meeting, the hearing date was set for tonight. This is a request to consider a conditional use permit and site plan review, as well as a request to vacate the portion of Midland Avenue between Highway 67 and Burdette Street for a proposed tire center store. The subject property is located off of Highway 67 and Midland Avenue, just south of the existing tractor supply. The proposed, or the property is zoned service commercial, as seen on the right-hand side of the slide. The subject property is located within the L Clifford Edition subdivision, which was originally approved by city council in 2002. The final plat considered consisted of a total of three lots, two residential lots, and one commercial lot. In 2004, Lot 1 of the L Clifford Edition was rezoned from community commercial to service commercial per ordinance 983, series 2004. In 2014, the L Clifford Edition filing 2 was approved by a city council, which subdivided Lot 1 of filing 1 into two lots, as seen here on the current slide. Lot 1 of filing 2 is where tractor supply operates, and the subject property, which is outlined in red, is where the applicant is proposing the approval of a conditional use permit to allow for a Les Schwab Tire Center. Included within the L Clifford Edition is Midland Avenue right-of-way, which runs along the southern property line of the subject property from Highway 67 to the west beyond Coraline Street. Within this right-of-way, a portion of the road has been constructed adjacent to Highway 67, which primarily provides access to the north side of Big D Motorsports. Another portion of Midland Avenue has been constructed from Coraline Street approximately 200 feet to its eastern terminus. While utilities have been located within this portion of right-of-way, due to the steep grade of the land between these two street stubs, this remaining portion of Midland Avenue is not planned to be constructed. The unconstructed portion of Midland Avenue is outlined in blue on this slide. Lastly, the portion of the right-of-way highlighted in yellow is the portion of the right-of-way the applicant is proposing to vacate. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit and site plan review to allow for a six-bay car, or six-bay Les Schwab Tire Center building to be constructed on Lot 2 of the L Clifford Edition filing number 2. Within chapter 18.9 of the City of Woodland Park Municipal Code, automotive and vehicle repair and maintenance shops is listed as a conditional use within the SC Zone District. The subject property is currently being accessed off of Highway 67 through Midland Avenue. As previously stated, while utilities have been established within the right-of-way, only a small portion of Midland Avenue has been developed as a usable street. Due to the steep grade in the undeveloped portion of the right-of-way, the applicant is proposing a portion of Midland Avenue to be vacated, and a private shared access easement will be established and improved to provide access to this property, as well as the adjacent commercial properties to the south. As seen on the right-hand side of the slide, the subject property, as well as its commercial properties to the south, which are outlined in red, are currently using the same access point. If the applicant's request is approved, the shared access easement will serve all commercial properties, as seen on the slide. As stated, the shared access easement is proposed to be private and owned and maintained by the property owners. The current slide is the proposed site plan, which is also attached within the application. As seen here, the applicant is proposing a 10,334 square foot building on the eastern portion of the site. The proposed site plan includes a parking area with a total of 34 parking spaces, which is 12 parking spots above the city requirement. The preliminary landscape points out that the, the western portion of the property is to remain as it currently exists with mature pine trees in order to create a buffer between the proposed tire center and the existing residential properties to the west and southwest. On this slide are the original proposed elevations that the applicant has submitted. The building is planned to be a total of 30 feet in height. The proposed building materials consist of different colored primary concrete mason, masonry unit blocks. Staff found that the proposed building does not have a significant mix of materials and does not meet the Woodland Park Architectural Design Guidelines, as you will be able to see in the conditions of approval. The applicant is aware of this condition, has, and has since submitted new elevations. The new submittal is currently under review and are not yet finalized. Staff reviewed section 18.57 when looking at the conditional use portion of the application. The development needs to demonstrate a need at the location proposed. The development should not endanger public health. The proposal shall not injure the surrounding property values, and the application needs to be in harmony with the proposed location, and the application complies with the provisions on the slide. The development needs to conform to provisions of city plans, and this complies. The proposed development shall adhere to city municipal codes, and this may comply. Attached, we send a, a copy of the city redline comments to the applicant for the proposed site plan. Within the redline comments, staff called out specific issues on the site plan, including the location and installation of fire hydrants, adding a proper fence for buffer for the residential areas, and issues relating to proper striping for the intersection configuration. Per condition number two, condition of approval number two, the applicant must submit a final site plan resolving all issues on the redline plans. The applicant has submitted an updated version of the site plan, and staff is currently reviewing the revisions. The proposed development needs to be built to mitigate on and off-site traffic generated, and this also may comply. The applicant did submit a traffic impact analysis within their application. And due to the fact that the proposed development will be accessed off of Colorado State Highway 67, the applicant must submit for and gain approval of access, an access permit through Colorado Department of Transportation. The development needs to be constructed to mitigate drainage and water usage. Provision number eight and nine on the slide comply. The proposal cannot increase fire danger, and this may comply. This application was referred to Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District during the review, review period. Chief Lambert sent an email to staff on July 18 stating that the applicant must install two fire hydrants on the site in order to accommodate the fire protection district. Lastly, the proposed building must meet Woodland Park Architectural Design Guidelines, and this may comply. As previously stated, staff found that the proposed building does not contain a significant mix of materials. And staff has added a condition number, a condition of approval that the application shall work with staff to ensure that it meets this provision. Staff also reviewed section 18.34 when reviewing this application. That full analysis was with, was within your staff report, and this is very redundant to the criteria we just reviewed. In accordance with a conditional use permit, the applicant, the applicant is also required to submit for a preliminary site plan, along with other preliminary documents. As far as process goes, staff may, makes comments on the preliminary documents during the CUP process, and it gets resolved when the applicant submits for their final site plan, which are essentially construction documents. This process is administrative through the planning department. This request was also subject to municipal code section 12.8, vacation of public right-of-ways. The vacation of streets will be considered based off, based on its effect on utilities. This provision may comply. While no adverse effects are to be expected from the granting of this variance or from this vacation, since this vacation includes land that is currently unimproved due to the existing utilities on the proposed easement, must accommodate those. The new easement will need to provide for access and general utilities. The right-of-way vacation shall be subject to the same rules and regulations as the land, and this may comply. If the roadway property line of the city, it may be vacated by joint action of the city council, and by no part of the road shall be vacated to leave any landowners without access. Both of these provisions comply. In the event of vacation of roadways, easements may be reserved to continue use, and this may comply. The approved final platform has utilities within this platted right-of-way, and no changes to the listed utilities or existing infrastructure are proposed. These utilities would remain in place if the right-of-way vacation is approved. Additionally, the proposed right-of-way vacation was referred to city, city departments, outside agencies that service these utilities. The City of Woodland Park Utilities Department commented that the city must retain all easements. And please add a note that all improvements within the easement are the property owner's responsibility. If those improvements are removed in the event of a repair or maintenance on the utility, it will be the responsibility of the owner to replace said improvements, to include concrete asphalt fences, et cetera. The two provisions on the slide comply, which are the applicant must fill out the proper right-of-way request forms, and the planning commission and city council must hear the application with the city council giving the final determination. Lastly, all three provisions on this slide comply, which are the final determination, if approved, shall be contained within an ordinance and meets to, or and needs to be recorded with the Teller County Clerk's Office, and the applicant needs to pay all fees prior to final approval. The application was referred to the internal and external review, review agencies listed here on the screen. Staff did receive public comments on this application, and that was attached within your staff report. As I previously stated, here before you tonight, our two ordinances, one associated with the right-of-way vacation and one associated with the conditional use and site plan review. These will require separate motions tonight, something to keep in mind. The planning commission heard the, these applications, and for the right-of-way vacation, planning commission recommended to city council approval of the request to vacate a portion of Midland Avenue between Highway 67 and Burdette Street, subject to the following conditions. An easement be established in the vacated area, and the right-of-way vacation exhibit must label the vacated area as public access and general utility easement. The applicant must add a note to the right-of-way vacation exhibit that states all improvements within the easement are property owner's responsibility. If those improvements are removed in the event of a repair or maintenance on the utility, it will be the responsibility of the owner to replace said improvements, to include concrete asphalt fences, et cetera. Lastly, condition number three, property owner maintenance agreement must be reviewed and approved by the City of Woodland Park prior to recording. The recommendation for the right-of-way vacation, that city council approved ordinance 1463, series 2023, in ordinance vacating that portion of Highway 67 and Burdette Street, and establish a public utility or public access and general utility easement within Woodland Park, Teller County, Colorado. For the CUP and site plan review portion, planning commission recommended to city council approval of a conditional use permit and site plan to allow for a proposed automotive and vehicle repair and maintenance shop within the service commercial zone district, subject to the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of building permit, the applicant shall submit for and receive approval of a final site plan for permitted uses, including landscaping, drainage, architectural elevations, et cetera. Infrastructure zoning development permit fees in lieu shall be submitted pursuant to municipal code 18.33.170. ZDP and building permits for all new construction include, including civil and construction drawings, final drainage report, landscaping plan, site plan, floor plans and elevations, grading sediment and erosion control, final utilities plan, photometric plan, and Colorado stormwater permit with stormwater management. Condition number two, a final updated site plan resolving all issues identified on the redline plans must be approved by the city before any zoning development permits will be issued. All development impact fees must be paid prior to any ZDP issuance, including but not limited to tap fees, stormwater capital improvement fees, transportation capital fees, et cetera. Fees shall be calculated concurrent with the zoning development permit review. The applicant must install two fire hydrants per the recommendation of chief of the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District. The applicant shall amend the proposed building facade to better harmonize with the Woodland Park Mountain Western aesthetic. The applicant must submit for and gain approval of an access permit with striping plan from CDOT. And lastly, the applicant must submit for, submit an updated preliminary site plan designing the western portion of the property as a natural buffer area. The recommendation to city council is that city council approve ordinance 1464, series 2023, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit with site plan review for the purpose of allowing an automotive vehicle repair and maintenance shop on Lot 2, L Clifford filing number 2, address 902 West Midland Avenue in the Service Commercial Zone District. This concludes my presentation. We also have Derek Lutz here. He's the applicant representative. And please let us know if you guys have any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments for CJ? See Robert and Catherine.
Mine's actually probably for, it could be for either.
Okay.
I just have a question on, and it's, it's just an informational question more than anything. Why the extra 12 parking spaces? I mean, do we need that much asphalt?
That'd be a great question for the applicant.
And that's, and that's the only question I have.
Okay.
So we'll let, Robert, do you have a question for CJ?
Yeah, I have, I have two CJ. One is the, I know it's up for review. Do you have some idea of what the Mountain Western look that we're looking for looks like? Can you reference some other buildings in town that you've kind of?
Yeah, so we actually have a pamphlet. The planning department has a plan, a pamphlet that we do hand out to the applicants. You know, with different buildings specifically on 24 and Midland. We want to see a lot of mix of materials. You know, the color of the materials to be, you know, really conforming with the background. A lot of, we like the wood here in Woodland Park, right? So things like that, so.
That's something that you're reviewing, and it has to pass that test before.
Correct, yeah, and that's, that's done administratively with the planning department, typically during the final site plan review. Okay.
Listen. So the other question might be connected, I don't know. Number seven, you said that, that you're designating a natural buffer area. I saw in the comments, there was one of the adjoining neighbors, John Necessary, and he was concerned about the sound. Is there some consideration being given for the surrounding neighborhood to create some sort of sound barrier in the design here?
Yeah, I can definitely let the applicant hit on that as well. This condition number seven was a condition that the planning commission actually recommended to you all, that labeling that portion of the site a natural buffer area, that eastern portion, or the western portion of the site, I'm sorry. I was never really touched as far as the applicant's concerned. The very first drawings that we did receive were, you know, they wanted to keep that open, you know, for those mature pines that are currently existing for that noise, for the sideline views of those existing neighbors. Another, they do actually have to have some sort of fencing around that property on the west side facing the residential areas, and that's per code. When a residential lot borders a commercial lot like this, when it gets developed, we have to have some sort of buffering fence there. So that's a requirement that we're going to make the applicant provide.
So when you say fencing, you don't mean chain link, you mean something in a sound with a block fence or something like that?
Um, I, Karen, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm going to look at my director here. Like a chain link fence with some sort of site barrier within the fence is allowable per code. So ultimately, it would be up to the applicant if they would want to do something more to mitigate that sound.
So that doesn't address sound, though. Go ahead.
Yeah, I said, the fencing typically is more about screening, so it's more the, to mitigate the visual of seeing the use, you know, to make that separation. In the planning commission minutes that were attached to the packet, hopefully, that included a pretty detailed conversation of planning commission around sound. And to the best of my knowledge, the applicant should be prepared to talk about that again here with you all this evening. So they had, they had some good information to share.
Okay, thank you. Now I have one question. CJ, when I look at the diagram, we're Midland on the west.
On the west was actually put in where there's the asphalted portion that's west of the. Eat the right of way. And then where the new asphalting will come in off of sixty seven. Those two will never connect, correct? Or I guess they could, but that is not in the plan to.
So.
Make it a through street.
Yeah, just so I'm clear, the, can you guys see my mouse here? So the asphalt here and here. Correct, they are not, I mean, we in the, here in the planning department, we don't like to say never. Because that always seems to bite us in the rear end, so. Right now, it's not planned to that slope. I'm sure everyone's aware. It is very, very, very steep and I mean, to meet engineering specifications. The, and someone would win an award, I think, so. If they can make that work.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything further for CJ? All right, well, let's go ahead and let the applicant come up to the podium. If you'd just like to introduce yourself and if there's anything you'd like to add. And then I'll let council have questions or comments for you.
All right, I think, think CJ is going to be pulling up a PowerPoint here, but my name is Derek Lutz. I work for Farnsworth Group. We're the civil engineer. For the proposed Les Schwab Tire Center here in Willen Park and. Want to thank you all for letting us present this project for you tonight. So a little background on Les Schwab tires. They were founded in nineteen fifty two in central Oregon. They now have over five hundred stores in nine western states. Over twenty five stores here on the front range of Colorado. This store will provide ten to fifteen full time jobs. The normal operating hours are Monday through Friday, eight AM to six PM and Saturday, eight AM to five PM. The store manager of all Les Schwab stores is a fifty percent owner. And supporting the local community and charities is a main focus of all Les Schwab tire stores. So some of the challenges we faced with this project. It, first issue was coordinating access with both C dot and the city of Woodland Park. And the first comment was to move the access to the site as far west as possible. So with that came into looking at extending Midland Avenue initially to make it a through street. But the existing grades exceed twenty percent for significant portions of that corridor. And the maximum allow allowable grade for a local street is ten percent. Up to twelve percent with city engineer approval. Another major issue is just the existing site grades onsite. The mainly the wooded area that you see roughly a third of the site exceeds three to one slopes. And due to these challenges. We've looked at over twenty different site plan layouts to accommodate. As best we can getting the access as far from Highway sixty seven for traffic safety concerns. And also to have a feasible site to build and construct. So some of the solutions. In coordinating the access with both C dot in the city, it was determined extending Midland Avenue. Is not feasible. Purely based on the existing grades. And once that was determined, the city requested that we vacate the portion. Of Midland Avenue right away, because essentially this is. Just a driveway that's going to serve both Les Schwab and Big D Motorsports. And the idea of the complications of maintaining that access, snow removal and such. It's pretty quick that the city recommended. Vacating the right of way and passing that maintenance responsibility to the property owners. So with the site plan that you see here, we have moved that access as far west as we can. Basically, at the west curb line there, we hit a four to one slope going west. Another part of the coordination. Having the access as where it is currently shown. It would only be approved if we could coordinate with Big D Motorsports to realign their access further to the west. To be directly across from the Les Schwab. And regarding site grading. This layout minimizes retaining walls. We're not able to completely eliminate. Retaining walls completely from the site, but this does minimize it. This maintains the general site character without creating excessive cuts. We're trying to match the existing grades as much as possible. And this allows us to maintain a large vegetative buffer on the west portion of the site. And just. For reference, the southwest corner of the property. Is forty seven feet above the finished floor elevation of the building, so. With the building being thirty feet tall, it's still seventeen feet below. The actual property corner to the southwest. This project has also required significant coordination with adjacent landowners. The right of way vacation application has been signed by. The current owner of the Les Schwab site. Daniel Duncan, the owner of Big D Motorsports and the next property to the west, which is Michael Gat. Daniel Duncan has agreed to relocate his entrance. To align with the Les Schwab access point. The, a shared access and temporary construction easement has been signed and notarized by both. The Les Schwab. Property developer and Daniel Duncan. And maintenance responsibilities are within that document. And again, it's all signed, notarized, it is ready for recording once we're able to do so. So that. Back to the vegetative buffer, essentially the highlighted yellow line that you see will be the extent of our area of disturbance. With, with having the entrance as far to the east as C dot would allow. We were able to push the site as far east as, as you see here. It came up, would it be possible to put a drive aisle on the south side of the building? But again, existing grades would not allow for that. And with, with us pushing the site as far east as possible, we are maximizing that existing native bu, native vegetative buffer to the west. Concludes my presentation, but regarding the twelve parking spaces that are above the required minimum by the code. Les Schwab has their own standards of what they would like to see. For parking, minimum parking for a store. And I might be getting this wrong, not, not entirely correct, but there's a minimum number they like to see per. Bay that they have at a store plus a stall for every employee that will be there. And then the way the site laid out that would require the parking on the west that we have. So we might as well fill that whole bank with, with stalls.
I figured it was something along those lines. I was just curious. And then I did have one more question, if you don't mind. Where are the, where are you, are you gonna store the type, the old tires or the used tires indoors?
They, they'll be stored internally, yes.
Thanks.
And can you address the question of the neighbor and the sound for neighbor on, I think he's at Midland, he's on. Nine twenty Midland.
Yes, see, can you go to my last slide in the.
Vegetative.
There's one, there's, there's one after the finals. So as you, I'll give you a second to digest this, but highlights basically the west end of the building. Are a hundred and ninety three feet from the western property line. The buildings aligned parallel to that property line. And again, the finished floor elevation has forty seven feet of difference to that southwest property corner. The chart you see here to the right was, came from a. Noise study that Les Schwab had conducted for one of their other stores, I believe in Bend, Oregon. And. That study assessed that it's a pretty good comparison at two, two hundred feet was the property line for that site. And the maximum noise levels with open bay doors during operation. Were fifty nine to sixty four decibels. So then if you look over to the chart. On the right between sixty and seventy decibels. A comparison, normal speech at three feet. Is nearing seventy decibels. Heavy traffic at three hundred feet is also in that range. A gas mower at a hundred feet, that's, that's the range of. Sound we would expect at two hundred feet. And that's over. Open space. Again, in this case, we've got a large vegetative buffer, significant. Elevation difference, differences, and we do have per. The ordinance for more for sight, there is a fence. It's an eight feet, eight foot tall privacy fence right at the back of curb of the western parking stalls. A little hard to depict here, but.
On that other, the other diagram that has a curve on it.
Where CJ is pointing here, in a two D plan, it doesn't, doesn't jump out at you, but.
So that part where CJ is pointing with his cursor is forty seven feet below the, the property line. That, I mean, below the property.
At the southwest corner, yes. At the northwest corner, it's not nearly as significant of a drop. The, the high point is that southwest corner and it generally slopes northeast. So. I don't, I apologize, I don't have the exact elevation of the northwest corner. But the house to the west is at the south end of, near the south end of that. Property.
Which has a higher, just the higher.
Yes.
Okay, so it could be out of the yellow and almost into the green, perhaps with that natural buffer.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
And I have one question. Well, first a comment, thank you for your slide presentation because you addressed the exact question I, I was asking about the street being completed. My only hope is, did that information come out at the planning commission meeting? It did.
It was discussed at planning commission.
Okay, and the reason why I'm dragging us down this rabbit hole was kind of like Robert. He saw a public comment and he's addressing, hopefully the citizens listening to Robert's questions. There was a Kate Cushing who had another public comment concerned about the street. She lives at, at the nine oh seven and hopefully she sees this recording and your information and my questions have completely satisfied her, I'm hoping, so thank you.
Counsel, anything further? Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation. CJ, is there anything you wanted to follow up with? Okay, Suzanne, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? We do not. Okay, very good. Counsel, can I get a motion? We can do separate motions for both, please.
But don't we have to vote separately?
Yes, separate.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen sixty three, series twenty twenty three. Vacating a right of way between Hi, Highway sixty seven and Burdette Street.
I'll second.
You may vote, counsel.
I'm completely unresponsive. I'll log in again, but I vote yes.
Thank you. Counsel motion is passed unanimously.
And then I'll make a second motion to approve ordinance number fourteen sixty four, series twenty twenty three. Granting a conditionally used permit as presented.
Can I just ask you to amend that to say the seven clauses are satisfied?
Including the seven conditions that were presented to us.
I'll second.
Counsel, you may vote. Thank you. Counsel motion is passed unanimously. Very good. We are already off to reports. And I have a couple of dates to announce. Saturday, November twenty fifth, from nine AM to four PM at the U Pass Cultural Center. Join the mountain artists for this year's annual show and take home artwork for holiday gifts and for yourself. The admission is free. Sunday, November twenty sixth, from eleven AM to three PM at the U Pass Cultural Center. You can come see the annual, the third annual Artist Sunday Event. Hosted by Reserve Our Gallery Artists, they, the artists set up, provide demonstrations and showcase their work. And the original will be there for sale along with prints, cards and other products. Admission is also free and there will be music and food as well. Friday, December first, from three thirty to five thirty, Memorial Park, the Woodland Park. Parks and Recreation will be hosting Winter Day at the Park, featuring Hot Chocolate, Candy Cane Lane. Pictures with Santa and more. Be sure to dress warm and bring a flashlight and it is free admissions. Saturday, December second and Sunday, December third, from ten AM to five PM. There will be the Holiday Home Tour presented by Tweeds. It is a historical tour of Greater U Pass area homes with six venues being featured. Tickets and details can be found at the Greater Woodland Park Chamber website. Saturday, December second, from six PM to seven PM. Starting in downtown this year's Woodland Park will be the Woodland Park Nightmare Before Christmas Parade. Details, including frequently asked questions of parking, lineup and parade route can be found at the Greater Woodland Park Chamber site as well. That's all I have, Councilmember Case.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report back to you all on the Park and Rec Advisory Board. The Parks and Rec Monthly Reports, September and October. For the WAC particularly, everything, the numbers are still very outstanding. The WAC is showing in September a recovery rate year to date of sixty three percent. And for October, sixty one percent, so they're still doing quite well. Thank you.
I would like to give a DDA report, but we actually canceled the DDA meeting scheduled for November seventh because we had known in business. The next scheduled DDA meeting is now December fifth at seven thirty right here in the chamber.
Very good. No rest, Councilmember Neil, yeah. That's not the date, we're not having that meeting.
December fifth.
Well, least if you're having it, it's not here because I have the election and this room is.
I made an assumption it would be here. I'll coordinate with Tony.
Okay.
The date of the next scheduled meeting is December fifth, location is to be determined.
Thank you. Very good. Councilmember Zuluwaka.
Keep Woodland Park beautiful. The bylaws are back from the legal review. So council can expect to see that on our docket either December seventh or January the fourth.
Very good. Councilmember Nikai.
I don't have anything, thanks.
Councilmember Connors.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank everybody who was involved with the Veterans Dinner at the U Pass Cultural Center. It was a very successful dinner and a very great evening, so thank you all who was invited to that. Monday, and I don't know if Chief, you want to come up and talk about Santa Claus? Yeah. Well, that one day on the twenty seventh of November, I've been really good this past year. Well, that one day on the twenty-seventh of November, I've been really good this past year. That's also my birthday, so if he wants to show up.
Interestingly enough, we'll find out how good you have been on the twenty-seventh. So what, what Councilmember Connors is referring is we're having our annual city center run. Where we're going to accompany Santa through the different neighborhoods of the city on the four days starting on the twenty-seventh of November. From five to seven, so our maps are posted on our Facebook page, so look for them. Find out where you are along the route, listen for the sirens and pick up a candy cane or two, so should be a good time. And maybe a little warmer than it was last year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. And one last thing, Mayor, I have is that the Historical Preservation Committee has done their this year's poster. So that'd be out soon for everybody to enjoy.
Nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey. And just briefly too, I forgot to say Gateway Elementary, their class. I went to their second grade class and it was really a great experience and I just want to say thank you to all of the students and to their teacher. Because they sent me a giant envelope full of thank yous that were just absolutely precious and I really appreciate it, so thank you very much. And off to our city attorney.
Suzanne, did you want to?
Thank you, Mayor. I just need to, I need to just correct the record for something that. Was brought to my attention, some traffic on Facebook and, as you know, staff, we do not respond. To Facebook posts, but I do need to correct a statement that's being made out there. I received a records request on October third from a citizen. Asking me if the citizens initiative people had filed paperwork for an issue committee. At that time, on October third, my answer was no. Since then, on October nineteenth, they came in and they filed all the necessary paperwork. In a timely manner for their, their name of their issue committee is PNC, preserving neighborhood character. And so I just want to make the record known that they have filed all appropriate paperwork and they have their issue committee for it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I would just like to say our sat, our staff has been working very hard getting all the Christmas decorations up throughout the city. We have a lot of the medians and things lit up and most of the lights will all be lit up the week of Thanksgiving, so look forward to that.
Very good.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.
We enjoyed the sneak preview of the lights, Aaron.